Good evening. I'm back in as President Pro Tem and it is Tuesday, January the 3rd, 2023, and I now call the Winton Woods City School Board of Education Organizational Meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Birdy?
Present.
Ms. Bryant?
Present.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Present.
Dr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is 2.01, which is the election of our Board President for the 2023 calendar year. Board, I will entertain a nomination at this time.
I would like to nominate Paula Coon for President of Winton Woods City School Board for the academic year of 2023-2024.
I'll second.
The nomination has been motioned and seconded. Are there any discussions? Seeing that there are no other nominations, I declare the nomination for the Board President closed. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
That vote passes unanimously, and as President Pro Tem, I now declare Mrs. Paula Coon as the newly-elected President of the Winton Woods City Schools Board of Education for the term of one year, 2023. Mr. Seymour, would you please come forward and minister the President's Oath of Office?
Thank you.
You'll just say your name.
I can't pronounce my name.
Aye.
I, Paula Coon.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Perform the duties of President.
Perform the duties of President.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Winton Woods City School District.
Of the Winton Woods City School District.
Hamilton County, Ohio.
Hamilton County, Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you sign these when you get the chance?
Yes, thank you. Well, thank you for. Well, don't, if you get, I don't think you give me any good anywhere. There's no good anywhere to get me at the moment.
It is my pleasure now to turn the gavel over to Mrs. Paula Coon as the 2023 President of the Winton Woods City School Board of Education.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Johnson. Thank you to my board members. And again, I apologize. I'm a little bit out of sorts. I hadn't felt well the last couple of days, so you'll have to pardon me. This is not indicative of the way the rest of the year will run. It will be very.
We know that.
Run very well. So I appreciate it. Thank you. But our next agenda on our item, it's 3.01, is the election of the Vice President, of the Board Vice President for the 2023 calendar year. Board, I will entertain any nominations at this time.
Madam President, I'd like to nominate Mrs. Deborah Bryant to serve as Vice President for the Winton Woods City School Board for the 2023 calendar year.
I will second that.
Very good. The nomination has a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'm pleased with the nomination, thank you. Seeing there is no other nominations, I declare the nomination for the Board Vice President closed. Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
And the vote passes unanimously. So the, as the newly-elected Vice President of the Winton Woods Board of Education, I now declare that Deborah Bryant has been elected as the Vice President of Winton Woods City School District Board of Education for the term of the next, of this year. Mr. Seymour, would you come forward and administer the Vice President's Oath of Office?
I solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Perform the duties of Vice President.
Perform the duties of Vice President.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
And the Winton Woods City School District.
Of the Winton Woods City School District.
Hamilton County, Ohio.
Hamilton County, Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Bryant. Our next point of our meeting, 4.01, is the schedule of our regular school board meetings, of which I believe everyone has a copy of the school board meetings projected for 2023. Okay, and I'd like to have a motion for the appro-
I'll make a motion to approve the schedule of regular school board meetings as presented.
I'll second. Okay, is there any discussion on the meetings? Did you get a chance to review them? There is one I was just going to ask about on June 26th, and I don't know if it would be possible to have it the week before. If that's possible at all, I'm not, I don't have a calendar right in front of me. I don't know if there would be some issues. It's in the summer, so I'm not really sure.
So you're proposing the week of the 8th, the 19th?
The 19th.
Mm-hmm. That wouldn't work, or?
No, I, there's no issue.
Okay. I would propose that on, instead of June 26th, it would be June 19th. And the reason I bring that up is I do have a scheduling conflict that day.
I think it would be a really good time to have that meeting, simply because we could really express June 19th.
I was about to say, that may be an issue for me because.
Oh, do you think, was that, is that not the best day?
I could imagine I'm going to be knee-deep in production somewhere on June 19th, as I was this year.
That's a good point. I do like the idea to bring that up, but I don't want to have a conflict. Well.
Could we do it, well, we can do the week before.
It's, I don't, I don't want to put anybody out of.
I think you mentioned, Ms. Kuhn, that it's in the summer, so even if you moved it up, I know the preparation time that Mr. Seymour has is probably more dynamic, but if you moved it up even a week before that, so that Brandon could actually be here, I mean.
Is there, there's a meeting on June the 12th, though, also?
Because we got a work session on the 12th.
Our work session.
Well, could we switch our work session and make the work session the 20, like, on the 19th?
19th.
19th or the 26th and do the actual live session on the 12th?
That is, that would be fine with me if that's agreeable with the team.
So you're saying have the work session after?
I like the meeting in June as late as possible, but that, you do whatever you want.
Say it again.
He likes the meeting in June, as late as possible.
As late as possible in June. Well, let's see, we'll give my Vice President a chance to run a meeting, maybe?
Yeah.
It's good practice. Well, let's just leave, I'll withdraw my motion, since it became a little bit more complicated than it has to be.
Know that I won't be on vacation the week, there we go.
So, yeah. So the, the schedule as presented and motioned and seconded would stand. And Mr. Seymour, I don't think there's any other discussion?
Yeah, there's one more piece. The, the meetings will actually switch to a different campus. Because we're here now, we won't, all of the meetings won't be here.
Okay.
So it switches to the North Campus at a, when they don't have all those activities. There are too many activities to have it at the North Campus now. That's why it's here. They've got basketball and all, parking and games, and we would run into that at some point. So, Mr. Seymour and I have already talked about when the schedule flips.
So you'll put out something to notify everybody when that's going to actually happen?
Closer to that time.
Closer to that time.
Yeah, we didn't want to do it right now, because it would confuse people.
Yeah, it really would be. Thank you.
So we just waited, and closer to that time, it would be at the North Campus.
Okay, but in January and February?
Because we can't really just oversaturate this teacher's room every month.
Sure, yeah. So, but in January and February, it would still be here?
Yeah, we're still good, yeah.
All right, very good. So we'll, we'll wait for updates on that. Any other discussion?
No, I do know that I will not be here for the May 22nd meeting.
Very good. So with seeing no more discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Point. Oh, it has passed. The vote has passed unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Seymour. 5.01 is the next agenda item, which is the resolution of the adoption of the fiscal year 2023-2024 tax budget. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, as you know, you gave me permission to use the Modified Tax Budget, which is our five-year forecast. At one of our prior meetings, you authorized me to submit that to the County Auditor. And what we're doing here is the first step, and then in April, we'll get what's called the amounts and rates, and they set the taxes based on our request for our budget, and then they set the amounts and rates for the tax collections. So basically, it's just your funds that collect taxes. That's part of your tax budget. And the General Fund to match the five-year forecast is 56 million and 56, approximately 56 million. The Bond Retirement Fund is 3.2 million, Permanent Improvement, 610,000, and then Facility Classroom Maintenance, 200,000. The Facility Classroom Maintenance is that fund that we're required to have due to the OFCC to maintain our buildings, our new buildings. And so I'm asking the Board to approve the tax budget for the year 23-24. And then in April, you'll come back and the Auditor will assess the tax, the mileage and the rates, the values.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution adoption of fiscal year 2024 tax budget and the 2024 tax budget as presented.
I second. Go ahead.
I'll second it.
Okay. So Mr. Birdy made a motion, Mr. Brandon Smith seconded. It's been motioned, seconded. Any other discussion or questions?
I just have one point. On the, I think it's the tax budget summary, you have Monday, January the 3rd. It should be Tuesday, January the 3rd.
Thank you.
Nice catch.
Yeah, okay. So that's the only thing I've seen.
Very nice.
That's my calendar.
Which, was that on the summary?
That's on the summary, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
It's on the narrative, the summary, yes.
Any other questions? I'll wait for Mr. Seymour to note.
Where's that at, Dr. Johnson?
Is that the very top, where you have the date and, and everything?
Thank you, thank you.
Good, okay. Okay. And Mr. Seymour, as long as there's no more discussion, please call the vote.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye. The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Moving on to Agenda Point 6.01, which is the investment of inactive and interim funds. Mr. Seymour, back to you again.
I'm asking the Board's permission to invest, invest any inactive or interim funds that we may have available, and that I would always follow the Board policy and the Ohio Revised Code that are applicable. And then I always report back the interest in the investments to you.
Okay. Very good. Board, there's a, a motion would be in order?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Treasurer to invest inactive and interim funds in permissible investments pursuant to the Board policy and Ohio Revised Code when funds are available.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you. Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. Moving on to Agenda Point 7.01, which is the Authorization of Official Signatures. Board, a motion is in order?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion as per the Ohio Revised Code 33.13.15. Request motion to authorize, authorize the President and Treasurer to be the official signers for payment of funds for the Board of Education, and further authorizes that one or two of the authorized signed checks on the Board of Education accounts, and that the Treasurer's signature may be a facsimile.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Point 8.01, which is a resolution requesting the County Auditor to make advance payments of taxes. And Mr. Seymour, do you have more details for us?
You're more than welcome to read it if you would like to, but I'm basically asking you to approve that the County Auditor, whenever taxes are available and collected by the County Auditor, I can request in writing to make a tax advance, advance prior to the settlement date of the tax, taxes paid. And basically, I just send a letter down to the County Auditor, and any funds in our account are advanced to me prior to the final date. That gives us more time to have those funds for investment.
Okay. I'd like to have a motion from the Board, please?
I make a motion to approve the resolution requesting the County Auditor to make advance payments of taxes as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Any comments, questions?
I do have a comment, just for general purposes. Have we had to use the funds in advance prior to the standard operating procedure? Is that correct, Mr. Birdy?
You mean, have I needed to use them?
Mm-hmm.
Not typically. I like to have them available as quickly as, as the people remit their payments for their taxes. I like to request the funds, and then when I get the funds, they're directly deposited from the, by, from the Hamilton County Auditor right to our Star Ohio account. And that, right at that point, we start earning the interest on that, rather than waiting to the, what's known as the final settlement dates.
Great. Thank you for that.
And they require you to authorize me to request those funds as an advance.
Do you have to do that multiple times, or you just do it once?
I do it multiple times. I'll send them a letter tomorrow requesting any taxes available to be made paid.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
No, thank you for the explanation.
Uh-huh.
Thank you. Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye. Vote passes unanimously. Moving on to Agenda Point 9.01, which is regarding fund transfers, advances, and advance returns. Back to Mr. Seymour.
Here, I'm just asking for the Board's permission to make fund-to-fund transfers or any advances as needed. In my history at Winton Woods, we'd never made, had to make any advances. But we have, as you know, made transfers from the General Fund to the Athletic Fund, and I had you do a too-small to the Student Activity Fund. Any advance, any transfers would always be brought to the Board for their approval. I typically do that before I do it, ask the Board's permission.
Okay. Or to motion, if you would like, please.
I'll make a motion authorizing the Treasurer to make fund-to-fund advances, advance returns, and transfers as needed throughout the year with Board ratification as part of the financial reports at the next regular meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Any further questions, discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. Onto the next agenda item, 10.01, which is regarding the Board Member Participation in the Employee Benefits Plan. Mr. Seymour?
This is just a, an item that we put on the, or, on the, or at the organizational meeting. Board members are permitted to participate in the district's health care plan and dental plan at the total cost to the Board member. If any Board, Board member should elect to participate in our plan, it has to be done at a public meeting.
Do we need a motion before we ask a question, or how?
No, all we would do now is, if anybody's interested, we would, and I would, I would note their name, and we've, I have had it in the past, but I haven't had it recently.
So if anybody wants to, they just need to let you know now?
Right. They need to do it publicly, saying they're going to participate in the health or dental plan.
Anyone need to declare that in the public meeting? Nope, okay. Without that, do we need to have a motion about that, or we just can move on? There's nothing else?
No, that's fine, thank you.
Perfect. Okay, thank you very much. Next Agenda Point, Agenda 11.01, which is the Fiscal Officer of Student Activity Accounts. And Mr. Smith, would you please give the Board details about this?
Well, from time to time, Ms. Kuhn, the schools want to raise funds and do fundraisers. Some of these fundraisers really need some strict guidelines, because they're going to be kind of choppy. They're not going to do what they say they're going to do. You know, trying to do a fundraiser where you're talking about, you're going to sell oranges in the spring, it's probably not going to happen. You're not going to raise the money that you say you're going to raise. And so then the system goes in the hole, and we want to make sure that we protect it, so people are not going to, Mr. Seymour, asking to be bailed out of the situation. So it's really a guideline. When they bring a document letting me see what they're going to raise funds for, I'm saying, is that realistic? And so I look at the history to see what have you raised before?
Okay.
Because it's not our responsibility to bail you out of a fundraiser.
Okay. Before we ask any questions, like to have a motion on the floor?
I make a motion to appoint, to appointment of the Superintendent to be the sign-off officer of all student activity programs, and these programs shall be presented to the Board once each year. The Superintendent will also have the authority to approve and/or modify the student activity budgets throughout the year as warranted.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Any questions, any points of discussion?
I have a question. So Superintendent, when is the deadline for the budgets for?
Well, it depends on what they're, like, if they're going on a trip, the budgets vary based on how the year is moving. So it's not like everything has to be in at one time, because some of these people that are sponsoring trips and events are the same people.
Okay.
So they're going to Paris, they're going to Carnegie Hall, they're going to this. So it has to be done right, so they, you know that they do have the ability to raise the funds in time.
Okay. And once a year? So I know, I know that we're a new year, but it's the same school year?
Yes.
You will be bringing it for, when it changes?
Yeah.
No, we're going to present that to you next, those groups.
Right.
We're going to present the groups.
Right now.
Yeah.
Sure.
I said, that's been a year ago already. I'm like, that was a while ago.
And, and these groups are all like school functioning, they're employees, they're not like private and like PTA or anything like that?
We don't, we don't. And we got out of the GoFundMe accounts, because we didn't really know if those were really for kids, or if those were really for adults, so we had to protect the interest of the district by saying, this does not qualify.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So it's been motioned and seconded. Any other questions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. Moving on to Agenda 12.01, regarding the Student Act, further information about student activity accounts. I don't know if Mr. Smith wants to say anything, Superintendent Smith, prior to that, or?
No, they're just right here, for your view.
I'll let the Board make a motion, and we can discuss it, and second the motion.
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to request authorization for the Student Activity Accounts for the fiscal year 2023-2024 and the calendar year 2023 as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
I do have a question. This is just purely from my personal knowledge. I see that we have a key club in high school. Is there an opportunity for the middle school to do a builders' club if the Kiwanis still do builders' club for middle school?
Well, because you, and that's a good question, because of the energy and the Kiwanis, they're getting a little more seasoned, they didn't really have the, the energy to do too.
Okay.
But if they get younger Kiwanis and people that want to be part of it, it would be good to start those clubs early, so kids can be active and be part of it, since they're really on that campus. So I can inquire and find out.
Okay, thank you.
You'll have to forgive me, I don't have it in front of me, but some of those clubs that we saw that presented, like the game club, are those included on there too? Is that something you review, or do they have very big budget, very low-key?
No, they're, they're very, I mean, usually it's their own self-sufficient kind of way of doing it.
Okay, very good. Without any other discussion or questions, Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Sure. Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. Moving on to Agenda Point, or Agenda 13.01, which is the Authorization of the Then-and-Now Certificate. Mr. Seymour, could you give us more details on this?
Sure. As noted in Ohio Revised Code 5705, from time to time, we may have a purchase where someone neglected or forgot to do a purchase order, and all purchasing in the district requires a purchase order. And what the Board is giving me permission to do on anything that's less than $3,000 is if the funds were available when it was purchased, and the funds are still available, you're giving me permission to issue a now-and-then certificate to the purchase order and go ahead and make the purchase.
Okay. Board, a motion is in order?
I'll make a motion as per Ohio Revised Code 5705.41 to request authorization for the Treasurer to exercise the then-and-now certification of funds, provided the funds are within the Board-approved appropriations and free of any previous encumbrances.
I'll second that.
It's been motioned and seconded. Conversation, questions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. Agenda Point, or Agenda is 14.01, which is the Authorization to Modify Appropriations. And Mr. Seymour?
Here, I'm asking the Board's permission to amend appropriations within the accounts as necessary to meet district expenses, as long as I, transferring from different account to different account, as long as I don't exceed the total appropriations that you have, have approved and/or that has been adjusted by the end of the year, and their resources are available as determined by the Hamilton County Auditor. You're basically giving me permission to move funds within a fund, not from fund to fund, but like, say I need to transfer some funds from salaries of health to salaries of transportation, I can go ahead and do that, and at the end of the year, I give you the total appropriations, and I file the amended certificate with the County Auditor.
But it doesn't change the total appropriation of them?
Never change, I have never changed the total. I have to have Board permission to change the total.
Okay. I'd like to take the motion on the floor, or someone can entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion requesting authorization for the Treasurer to modify the original amount of appropriations as set by the Board. The Treasurer shall not alter the total amended appropriations as adopted by the Board. All modifications must be within the last Board adopted appropriations measure. The Treasurer shall stay within the funds available as certified by the Budget Commission of Hamilton County, or as amended and approved on or before June 30th by the Budget Commission.
I second the motion.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded.
Was that Mrs. Bryant?
It was Mrs. Bryant, second. Mr. Birdy made the motion. Any questions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. Moving to Agenda 15.01, which is the Recognition
which is the recognition of support groups. We'll go back to Superintendent Smith.
Yes, Madam President, these have all been endorsed, and they've turned in their, the correct paperwork to the treasurer to actually be recognized as support group. From time to time, groups will come and ask to be recognized, and if they don't have the proper documents, we don't recognize them as official support groups of our district.
Board, a motion is in order?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to recognize the support groups, athletic boosters, performing arts boosters, Witten Woods PTA, and each of these support groups has provided the board with their twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budgets for review.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or discussion? I do have one question. With the Witten Woods Educational Foundation, I know you don't review their budget, but is that an endorsed support group?
They've never, they've never attempted to do it, I don't think.
I didn't know if they had to be sanctioned or allowed to use, I know there were some groups.
Prior boards have decided not to sanction that, that would be your call?
No, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that they were recognized by the board. That, what I mean by that?
They're not recognized as an official board extension with an official four oh three B tax ID as recognized by the board, if that makes sense.
Okay, that does.
Just as a, just as a point of order, there's another organization that believes it fits that same bill, that would wanna have that same endorsement, and so, that's.
Well, that's why I didn't want, I, I didn't know what would constitute our endorsement, and, and I agree with the, the groups that we do endorse, I just wanted to clarify what were the definition on that, so thank you, I appreciate that. Any other discussion? If not, Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye. Vote passes unanimously. Onto agenda sixteen point zero one, which is the appointment of the purchasing agent. And Superintendent Smith, would you give the board details on this?
Well, because the business manager actually sees more of the activity of, of items being purchased, where I'm actually doing other pieces, other than purchasing items, or, you know, selling land, or et cetera, it, it's really appropriate for the purchasing agent to be the business manager, because he already has the business certificate already signed with his endorsement for hotel reimbursements, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that's kinda how it is in every district.
Okay. Board, a motion is on, is required?
I make a motion to request authorization for Mr. Steve Denny, Executive Director of Business Affairs, to serve as the superintendent's designated purchasing agent for the district, and all purchases exceeding two hundred and fifty thousand dollars as per board policy.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion?
Just one question, is this always been this amount, or did this amount?
It, it actually has increased over the years, but the safeguard is, anything that comes up to that two hundred and fifty threshold has to be brought back to the board for approval.
So it's not to exceed two hundred and fifty?
Yes, ma'am, that is.
Not exceed?
Right.
However, on construction, it's fifty thousand.
That's the amount I'm thinking of.
But that only, that only applies to construction.
That's only the brick and mortar, Doc.
Okay, 'cause I was thinking, it was fifty thousand, how do we get two hundred more, so, okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Twenty twenty-three inflation.
I'm like, does this number change? And you said, no, no.
But, but this number's been the same for a few years.
For a while, yeah.
Right. I was thinking construction, 'cause that's what we've been reviewing.
'Cause we've been living in this construction era for several years, so, that's, that's the deal.
I don't know why they separate that.
Right, right. Well, that's fine, I just, it was just like, wow, I just thought the amount was different, so.
That's a good question, it's a good clarification. That's a good point.
I kinda panicked for a minute.
Every, every since you gave up the gavel, your mind is free.
I can think now.
And this basically just means the superintendent reviews it. We purchase things for more than two hundred and fifty thousand that we don't get board approval on, but Mr. Smith reviews it.
So it's been.
For instance, our health insurance contracts.
Yeah, that's true.
Our Hamilton County Board of Education, our Hamilton County Service Center contract. But Mr. Smith's aware of all of those.
But Mr. Seymour gives me a hard time because I read every single word.
That's good.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Superintendent Smith, board, a motion's in order?
The motion is on the floor.
Yeah, we already did it.
We didn't.
Yeah, Deborah did.
Oh, Deborah, second?
And it got seconded.
And it got seconded?
Yes.
You guys are so good, man, we're moving around a lot, so we had a conversation over.
Yep, we did it.
Okay, cool.
Ready to vote.
So, we're ready without any other questions or comments. Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
The vote passes unanimously. And agenda seventeen point zero one, which is the continuation of memberships in the OSBA. Board, we do this, I believe, most every year, if there's a motion, I'd like to have a motion on the floor, or to make a motion.
Yes, yes. Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that we request approval for the continuing membership and subscriptions for the following: one, Ohio School Board Association, January through December twenty twenty-three; two, the subscription to the briefcase and the school management news, January through December twenty twenty-three; and three, the participation in the Ohio School Board Association's Legal Assistance Fund, January through December twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been motioned and seconded. Any conversation, questions?
Yes, Ms. Kuhn, I, I think it's important that, on the updates, for the, the briefcase and school management news, that there are some real robust conversations, bringing people up to speed of what that looks like in the briefcase, because the briefcase has the latest information.
Yes, I agree. Any other discussion?
Just to add to that point, the briefcase also carries some legislative stuff in it, that is of interest to the district.
And of course, there's the different training that is offered to school board members each year, and which is invaluable, and it helps us to become better servants of our community. Any other comments? If not, Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye. Vote passes unanimously. Moving on, agenda, agenda seventeen point zero two, which is the continuation of memberships in the National School Board Association. Board, a motion's in order?
Madam President, I'd like to make a request of approval for the continuation of the membership in the National School Board Association, January through December twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, I, there has been some discussion, at least, I think, outside of this board. There, there's a lot of school districts that have dropped out of the National School Board Association, I mean, oh, I don't know. Okay.
I thought we did drop out of one and join a different one.
No, didn't they come up in our training or something?
Well, the, the one thing is that the conferences of the, and I don't know how you guys feel about the OSBA, but the NSBA is, it's usually farther away, and that's why people don't do it. But it actually is a more robust conference than the OSBA, in my opinion only.
We, we went to one.
In Denver, and it was absolutely, it was absolutely amazing.
It was a great conference, it really was.
It was in Denver, but it moves around, so people figure, if I can go to OSBA, why not go to the NSBA? Yeah.
It is.
You get a national perspective, I know that some of the legislative stuff that Ms. Kuhn and I have been looking at, it gives a national perspective, but it's coming to Ohio soon, so we kinda get a peek shot.
And it makes it easier, as far as fiscally, for us to be able to travel if it's closer by too, I think, that's. And, and it is an important opportunity to share ideas and see what's going on, and how we can better improve our school district. Any other discussion points? We can look into that later on.
'Cause I think there was another consortium of school districts that had brought themselves together to basically compete with the National School Board Association, because I, I think there were concerns about how money was spent and the cost of things that were going on.
Training, did our trainer bring that up?
I thought they did.
I think she might, yeah.
That does sound very familiar.
But I'm, I'm not opposed to doing it, I'm just, wanna make sure it brings up.
Decided not to really endorse, and it would be people going on their own, and we didn't go as a group, was Cube.
Yeah, I remember that.
I remember that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, without any further questions? Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes unanimously. The next item is, on the agenda is eighteen point zero one, which is the Board Council Committee Legislation Legislative Liaison Appointments. And what we have is proposed, and I, I don't really see any reason to change anything unless anybody has a request, or?
One that's in here is, doesn't have names in it.
Oh, okay.
So you need to, I sent it out to everybody, but I didn't publicize it, 'cause I didn't.
That's okay. What I, what I was, I think it fits each person's skill sets very well. What I, what I would do, since I'd be president, and I sort of did the legislative, I would defer that to you.
Yeah, that's exactly what I did.
Very good, excellent. Ah, great.
And it's really kind of the whole tweaky change.
So, Ms. Kuhn, my notes don't indicate who's who.
I, I will, I'll go through, and, and I'll do that. So what I would do is, yeah, we'll, we'll pass around, but I'll go through it. For the Ohio School Board Association, the National School Board Association Legislative Liaison would be Dr. Johnson and Ms. Deborah Bryant. For the Great Oaks Board of Education is Mr. Birdy, who is approved through twelve thirty-one of two thousand twenty-three. Superintendent's Review and Evaluation Liaison would be Mrs., would be me, Mrs. Kuhn, and Ms. Bryant. Treasurer's Review and Evaluation Liaison is myself and Ms. Bryant. Although on that one, did, we may ask Jeff or Mr. Birdy for any assistance, since he had done it in the past, and and I don't mind taking advantage of people's past experience. Same with you, Dr. Johnson. As far as the municipality representatives, in Forest Park, I designate Dr. Johnson and Ms. Bryant. For Green Hills, would be myself and Mr. Birdy. And for Springfield Township, would be Ms. Bryant and Brandon Smith. Public Records Designee is Mr. Randy Seymour. For the Superintendent Committee Liaisons, the Student Achievement would have several people to be part of, Dr. Johnson, Mr. Brandon Smith, and Ms. Bryant. Community Engagement, what do you think?
It's too many.
Well, we only have, we only have two, but I think there's like, if one of the two of us can't make it, there's a third one.
Yeah, 'cause if you have three.
Right, that would be a meeting. What we would, yeah, what we would do is, we would have an alternate, alternate, yeah.
Yeah, we can have an alternate.
And in that way, it does expand the opportunities, but they won't all be there at the same time, but they can report back. Yeah, we will, we'll be mindful of that.
Yes, absolutely.
Same thing with community engagement, where we'll have three, but with an alternate. Do you want me to say who they are again?
Can I make, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, you would want to say, Dr. Johnson and Mr. Brandon Smith, or Ms. Bryant?
Right.
Very good, yes.
Or Mrs. Bryant.
Or, not and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good, we can do that. For community engagement, it would be myself, Ms. Bryant, or Brandon Smith. Financial advisory is Mr. Birdy and Ms. Bryant. Policy would be Dr. Johnson and Brandon Smith. The athletic and performing arts liaison would be Mr. Brandon Smith and myself. For the Board Member Handbook, this is a joint venture of our team, so it'd be Kuhn, Bryant, Johnson, Birdy, and Brandon Smith. For the OSBA Urban School District Advisory Network Liaison, this is Dr. Johnson, Mr. Brandon Smith, or Ms. Deborah Bryant. And then the OSBA SALT, S A L T liaison would be myself and Dr. Johnson.
Ms. Kuhn? Can I go back to one of the recommended actions on the committee?
Yes.
I know most of these have a backup person, but I know that Mr. Birdy has been diligent about Great Oaks, but is there a backup for that?
We don't, I think they have to be.
I think since we do a resolution appointing me to the Great Oaks Board, there isn't really a backup, so if I'm not going to do it, then we need to appoint somebody else to do it. We actually need to appoint somebody. It's a designated person that shows up at every meeting, it's not an either or.
No, I wasn't saying that, I'm saying that in the event that you can't make it to the meeting, then what, what, what information has been disseminated?
Yeah, I mean, they still provide everything to every board member, as far as what,
Okay.
you know, the agenda, the items that are discussed. They do it on board docs, just like we do, so all the documents are out there.
But they don't interchange board members?
No, they don't interchange board members of any, any school district.
Yeah, okay, very good. That's a good question, thank you. Yeah, it's more of a, just a list of who does what, versus some of our other liaisons and, and groups that we are representatives. With that, so team, everybody comfortable with their designation?
I would ask first, because I know that at some point, some of our community sites weren't meeting. How can we find out when they meet? And who should we contact to make sure that we're attending those meetings?
The municipality meetings? Those do have a define, I'm not sure about Springfield Township, but.
I think Forest Park conflicts with our meeting.
Correct. That could be a problem on a lot. But I would think on their websites, they have to, they have to post their meeting dates and times.
But is it a representative that we're, is it a particular group that we're supposed to meet with, or is it just the town, you know what I mean, like the municipalities show up at their council meetings? Because this is really engaging for students, I don't.
I think in the past, and you can correct me if it's wrong, but it's been the reach out, and sometimes you can take the superintendent or the treasurer. The last time we met with Green Hills, and it wasn't with the council, but was with the mayor and the chief of police, the superintendent and the business manager and myself went. So it depends on what the, maybe what the program we would like to interact with.
I think one of the things that the board would want to request is the agenda in advance, so that might be of interest of what to go to.
Yeah, that is true.
If it's related to school-related issues, or policies, or questions, and?
Or if it's gonna be a tip, or CRA, or something like that, that they're gonna put in play, you probably would want Mr. Birdy there, just to hear the conversation.
Yeah. That could be something we can work on better this year, at least myself. So, moving on to agenda nineteen point zero one, which is the Board of Education Operating Protocol. Board, a motion is in order to adopt the Board of Education Protocol for two thousand twenty-three.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to review and adopt the Board of Education's Operating Protocol for twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. Next, in agenda point twenty point zero one, which is Other Business As Necessary. And board, I don't, I don't know if there's any other business comments or items that we need to entertain before the close of business? We look all business now, okay. Seeing none, that leaves us to agenda, or item number twenty-one, which is Adjournment. And I appreciate my, my board's patience, folks, I appreciate that. Again, this is not indicative of[1731.91]